Okay, next up. We're back. Handicap parking space request for 22 B. Spring and Street.
We've all been through this before.
Yeah, we had one of these before.
Yeah, I know.
Does that recall?
No, just talking to Dave. Does that recall it? If I remember correctly, we post a handicap space, but it can't be reserved for particular person. Any handicap person could use it correctly.
Well, what I don't understand is we had one for Frank Zeller. And it was strictly for him in front of his house across from Hartenstein's. I have to say, this doesn't seem to be much different because during spring and summer, this poor old man, and I know him, he can't even park his car in front of his house. And he doesn't have, even if he had a garage, it's hard for him to get from there. So I, I know we did it for Frank Zeller and looking at where it is and the fact of, of Bonkies being there. That's just mine.
Borough has done it before. I wouldn't say we have. Not as this.
We have, we, okay, we as a borough have done it, not this council.
The problem that we're gonna have those if, if somebody goes to Bonkies and they've got a handicap car, they can park it.
Well, no, it's, it's reserved for, what do they, they say?
It can't be reserved per person. You can create a handicap parking space, but it's not reserved for a person.
Then how did we do it before?
I don't know how we did it before.
It was a lot of years ago.
Hard to imagine.
Well, it was probably about 15 years ago. I, I just feel sorry for him.
So I guess we need a motion?
Yes, I would entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion that we approve a handicap spot, but not singled out for any individual person.
That's not gonna help.
It'll help when Bonkies is closed. It'll help if he can get there.
And it'll have a problem when Bonkies is closed.
I mean, this, this is, actually, this is what we can do.
I'll, I'll second that.
That's what the statute is.
Okay, now discussion.
He's not asking for his own. He's just asking for a handicap spot.
The others.
Well, yes, he has, according to.
Have others on this council that you've set down.
One or two.
To the personalize.
May I, if I may? If that park is handicap reserved and some customer from Bonky parks there can be towed, right? A non-handicap.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right. So what, what's the likelihood that a handicap person is gonna park in this gentleman's space?
Probably probably too low.
Right. So if, if a customer parks there, you can tow him away and.
But you have a lot of people with handicap placards that will pull in there. And if he comes home in the meantime, he has no place to park.
I'm not familiar with this statute. Does it have its own handicap spaces for the?
No, no.
Street parking?
It's on the street.
It's on the street parking and you ought to see it. It's like a parade going through. People up and down trying to find a place to park.
Garage in the back. Right?
He can't walk from the garage to his house. He's ninety, what, seven? Ninety-three?
Is he able to have a parking pad there?
It's not, it's not really a, it's a barn. There's a small barn in the back door.
Council's been clear with the other ones.
If I may, just an idea, with two spaces? Two spaces. Maybe one person from the establishment parks, a handicap person parks there. And there might be a second one for their gentleman.
He actually does offer two locations.
I think the green location would, because you've got people that are living next door and it would take their.
Well, then you have the cigar shop right on the other side. You're between two businesses.
Does the cigar shop have a parking lot?
No.
But they have parking in back for customers. Oh, I didn't know that.
Cigar shop?
Yeah, he was asking about the cigar.
I think, I think Frank Zeller said handicap parking resident only.
Yeah, we can't refer back. I mean, the law either has changed under ADA or whatever. You can put in a spot, but you can't make it specific. So we just need to get away from the thought that we can make it specific to one person. It's not within the law.
Do we wanna try to have two spaces?
See that.
Recognizing that's a relatively heavy business street, could we look at changing the traffic flow of that street? Making it a one-way where Bonkies is and changing into diagonal parking? Increasing the amount of available parking for downtown? Passers, buyers, community goers? And what does it really impact? I don't think it's any of the immediate snow routes. If you only do it one way from Constitution to, what is that, First? Or right there by the other side of the tracks?
Second street.
Front.
First street.
That's actually an interesting thought. Donnie?
Oh, you mean about doing the diagonal parking?
Yeah, put diagonal parking here and make it a one-way street.
There's possibilities there. I mean, you'd have to get the engineers to do, I mean, not a chance.
And no parking on the other side of the street?
Right, no parking on the other side of the street.
It'd be a lot safer if it was one-way coming from Constitution, then you don't have to worry about it.
Right.
Whichever one-way it is, I, I think that we look at small towns and how they handle large volumes of cars. It's diagonal parking on one-ways.
You'd probably be able to get another 50% cars in there, I guess.
I think the parking seminar, and that was one of the instances that came up. And they recommended doing this exact same thing we're talking about.
I think years ago, they, they, somebody did a plan of that on Frank Street, or other, who did it though? Shallow that, but it never went any further than that. They, what engineering firm did it, or he did. But Bruce is here, he probably would have run that. Maybe Danny, did you run that at all?
That's something.
Seen the plan?
Why do you have to have an engineering firm just to change the parking?
Well, you're changing traction.
So you have, you can't just put up no parking and.
Could, could we, could we vote on this before we do that?
Uh, yeah.
I think it warrants some discussion. I think it makes sense to do some diagonal parking.
And I hate to say it this way, but we're gonna, we're gonna be doing this for, Francis Hitzo for, it, it's, it's not gonna be very long. We're gonna have that there.
Well, again, we, I think that's why it's, it's not a person.
Yeah, that's, that's an inappropriate comment.
No, I'm just.
No, leave, leave that out, please. Is there any other real discussion? Sorry.
It's just not gonna be there forever, is what I'm saying.
I deal with this all the time. I have no parking on my property.
Yep.
I have to park out on Franklin Street, on the south side of Franklin, right across from Burnell. If I leave, if I move my car anytime like after three o'clock one, any given day, I have to park out on Constitution at the second block of Constitution. So I can see where it's come and where Frank's coming from when we'd like a handicap spot. But I can see that it's gonna be filled by right-of-way.
Yep.
I mean, and I don't have any wealth at nine thirty when Bonkies is closed. Cause then I can come up and pull right into that spot, but.
You're right, Danny. That, that's, that's bad right there, because maybe you.
Discussion on this, this, this handicap spot in front of this house.
We're talking about just one or two?
I think we.
The motion on the floor is for one.
The motion is for one. Yeah, the handicap spot.
Handicap, they gotta be wider. Yeah, they gotta have extra room for Frank's.
Ready or?
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pours?
My vote is no.
No.
My vote is no. I don't know how many votes. We should go to show hands.
Show hands, yeah.
All in favor?
Favor, what's?
So the mo, the motion was to have a handicap spot without being exclusive for any individual.
Correct.
So I guess.
Okay, all the ayes, raise your hands.
One, two, three.
I asked for, my vote is no.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, it did.
Did pass.
One, two, three.
I'm sorry, this.
Three.
Okay. All right, so did pass.
So we had four votes, four?
Four, four to three, it passed.
Right, and who were the ayes?
Aye.
Two, three.
Okay.
All right, over.
Sorry. I think we should look into Mr. Taylor's idea of making it one-way and.
But you're still gonna have the same parking problem. Yeah, it's not gonna leave me. This request for a handicap space, you're still going to have that there. You're still going to have the same amount of flow. It would just be a matter of you do increase, increase the amount of parking, but I think it'd just be used up by, by residents. I, I'm, you know, it's something worth looking at. I just don't think you're gonna get the result that.
You want, that you want. Can we do a preliminary, just to lay out overlay of the street to see what, what it would gain us of parking?
Is that engineering piece?
I can. I, I understand. Yeah, I can. I should be able to do that just with aerial imagery.
Brian Switzer, doesn't he do traffic things?
Yeah.
He does traffic study.
I can look at, I can look at just a number of parking spaces without going into. Just using aerial imagery.
Keep in mind the width of handicap spots being wider to ramps.
Well, that's, if you actually make it easier, if it was an angled parking for a handicap, it would just have to be wider.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, that'd take up.
That's for ban accessible handicap. Which are usually on the ends, and normal handicap is the same. But I, I can take some imagery and overlay.
Can you do that?
Since, yeah, most establishments scale.
Thank you, appreciate it. It was a good idea. Consider authorizing advertisement of the 2024 street projects.
I don't think I have the list unless I'm.
Yeah, it's, it's follows the advertisement for bids.
Right, gotcha.
So this is just an extension of the shoulder work that was completed in 2023 out on South Front Street.
Oh, this is the Shrewsbury Township.
Yeah, so we're just extending that shoulder work to try to get that, to try to save the road for now until we can overlay it in the future.
Most stuff there today is pretty bad.
Pretty rough, yeah.
The only question I have about that is why was it not on the same schedule as the New Freeton Borough portion? There's already crew out on the road.
It was, it was funding. We knew what we had budget-wise for 2023, and that's the portion we did.
That's really my problem to pick that up because that's, that's basically what they did on Campbell and what Penn Buck did.
No, well, what, I mean, they just did some lane repaving. This is pulled out of the shoulder repair because the side of the road is basically collapsed.
Cause that, the road was originally concrete.
Yeah.
Right?
So that creates additional issues.
Cause it was then won and then not properly secured underneath it.
Well, anytime you're paving over concrete, you need to use some kind of, some kind of adhesion.
Does anyone else have any questions on the street project?
Like, does Shrewsbury Township, are they gonna be responsible for part of that since it's their property? Isn't that across the township?
Did you, did you read the agreement that's in the document?
Well, yeah, I did, but. I'm, are we sharing?
No, so Shrewsbury Township pays us the portion annually of their liquid fuels for that section of road. So we are also, we, being New Freeton Borough is also.
How much do they pay?
It's based on whatever the allocation of liquid fuels is for that year. As that allocation changes, so does the amount.
So how, how much was the liquid last year?
I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about.
Barely a quarter mile.
A thousand feet of roadway.
Okay. Cause there's a couple of different proposals that look like.
No, there's one base bid and one alternate. The base bid includes from Smith Mill out to the Maryland line. And the alternate is kind of midway between Logan and Smith Mill.
The alternate is entirely New Freeton Borough.
It is.
Okay.
This is just to authorize advertisement.
And the.
Yeah, for bid.
And this is all, this will be all utilizing liquid fuels funds.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't agree to.
I'd entertain a motion then to authorize advertisement of the 2024 street projects.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pours? Consider approval of the third amendment to ground lease for People's Bank. I entertain a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Just an interesting, by the way, People's Bank is merging with another larger bank. Yeah, a month ago? Orstown.
Orstown.
And the Orstown CEO was going to be managing the People's and the, at, at least initially.
I'm not quite understanding the consideration of the sum of $10.
Yeah, what?
They, they, every time I look back through, they've always paid $10 to basically re-record. Or I, I shouldn't even say re-record, just to pre-amend the lease.
And it's 9% of the assessed land value, correct?
The original lease was 9%. Uh, the first amendment, uh, first and second amendment was 10%. This amendment will be 11%. That was based on the original lease that was outlined in there. And that's 11% of the land value.
Right, so how much would that be?
Stay in 520?
No, it would be, I think it's 570.
It's 520 now, going up to 570.
Yeah, I think if you look, the land value is 62,000. And unfortunately, until the county really goes through reassessments, which. She's lost 62,000.
Do we not have the actual amount in the lease?
It's just 11% of the assessed value?
Yeah, that's what. Well, because if that were to change.
You get away from assessed value and have a flat rate?
We would have to, we would have to add that to this amendment. Again, this is just, this is just what they sent on the council. But that would have to be included in this third amended ground lease. I would say that would take some negotiating back and forth. Or discussion, maybe not negotiation, discussion.
It's 570 really? That beneficial to the citizens' city freedom in this lease? This major company that's now larger?
I mean, it does, you know, 11% of that 62,000, does seem low when you look at it. It is steady income, guaranteed income for the, the borough. I'm not sure that we would want that property vacant, but that could happen at some point. Not saying that.
I don't think you'd have any trouble getting.
Not saying that increasing rent would make that happen.
Is that a different areas? As long, as long as I can remember. I couldn't tell you what they're.
Just to be good to do share. Are these, we do have, we did, what, this council raised taxes 25% this last year. Once again, it's just a thought.
I'd sure take, that'd be a bargain if somebody wanted to start a business at that rate.
You're locking that in again for five years when it hasn't been assessed since 2004?
Yeah, for the Westbury Assessor.
I know, I know. But what do you think that they're gonna take, they're not gonna take the building with them if they go, if they end up closing up or they can. They can clear, clear the place out, but they can't take the building. That's a sweet deal.
Unfortunately, I hear that a lot about leases in New Freedom, and that's what I would like to see improved. How many buildings are leased in New Freedom? That mean, like People's Bank? Community Center? Others?
Uh, the property in Pleasant Avenue, that's a Horizon lease, that's in budget. Where are, what we have our brush pass?
Comcast.
And Comcast in the rail. But it's property that extends across the area.
Is the Heritage lease that building?
I think that's a dollar lease.
Not that I'm saying that it.
No, I understand, yeah.
On Veterans Park. We leased the Scout Building.
Scout Building, that's a dollar.
That's to, to the Scouts, but don't we rent that out to other people? No? Yeah, but they don't own it, we own it. Right, they pay, they pay a dollar. I thought they did lease that out.
I mean, I, the, the lease isn't up until October 1st. So there is some time with council with like Andy or, or Andy in my office to reach out to, you know, People's Bank and explain to them that council's not comfortable with that land lease rate. And, you know, they're, they're looking for further incentives to get, to extend that lease. And certainly can do that.
Well, my problem is I don't know what it should be. I don't know how to determine what it should be.
We can, we can figure that. We can probably get a, a good idea from, you know, our real estate people and, and that is something council wants to do.
I mean, obviously, you're getting over 10% assessed value, and you don't lose the land. So as long as you don't have a plan for the land at the time, you know, you might as well make money on the land, so.
Yeah, and, I mean, they're, they're buildings on the land, so I mean, they don't have, they're in a tough negotiating position.
Well, yeah.
Unless they, cause I've heard talk, unless they decide they're gonna close down that branch and make everybody go to Shrewsbury.
But I, I don't think that, I don't think that this ground lease, whether even, let's say you got up to 20% instead of 11%. You know, that.
They know there's.
That $400 a month isn't gonna make them leave.
Right, agreed. Well, why don't we do that? Why don't we at least ask the question of what, what is a reasonable ground rent for the property? It's, I looked up today, it's .6 acres. I think it's on, it's something.
So check the vote.
26,000 square meters. Yeah, so .6 acres. So I guess if, if we could get an estimate on what we feel would be a fair market value for a lease for, for the 26.
So we're gonna table it until we find out that information?
Yeah, I'm sure so.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta shoot, let them, shoot the motion down to do that.
Yeah, we gotta book it, we gotta.
Resent and then rescind the.
All right, um, all right, let's see.
Who made the first? Brian, you willing to rescind on your motion?
Do you wanna rescind it or you just wanna vote it out?
You can rescind it.
Just rescind it.
Then I'll rescind my vote.
I'll, I'll rescind my motion, yeah.
Okay. Then, um, then I, I don't need a motion to table, right? You just table it until, do I need a motion?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I. You can make, make a motion, do it, so it's even if it's for a handicap.
Make a motion, then we table this until next month and have our borough staff come up with other information as far as, or options for ground lease or other leases.
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah, I mean, again, I just wanted to have the.
What, October?
Have the information in front of council of what's being proposed and give the background. And then that's up for discussion. Now we have a direction, which way to go.
And I'll, I'll second that.
Right. So, and what, so just to restate your motion, what, what we're trying to do is come up with a fair and market value.
Some other, some other information about ground leases, cause that's not something that's, that's not something that's coming forward.
All, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pours? My vote is aye. Administrative reports, solicitor? I don't have anything at this time.
Um, I don't have anything additional other than what's in my report. I won't print out through and read any, any of that unless anybody has any questions or anything in there.
What, I'm gonna miss something. The April 10th meeting of the March Goodphil Park Advisory Group? What's the membership for that?
That is, um, the, the Lions had representation. We had rec numbers represented.
Patty, Mary Ann, myself, Ryan, Andrew.
I must, I must have missed that.
The, the, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the president of the Lions public.
The new president or the old?
Patty.
That, well, Patty is not known for president, Dawn.
Dawn, right.
King Dawn.
Dawn and Dawn also.
Is that up in the public?
No, it's just the advisory.
Okay.
It's not it's. Cause it's the council.
That's the one.
It'd be nice to have some, okay, you met, what happened?
The minister personally posted.
On our website? Oh, okay. I have trouble going through that website. Can find it, stuff. That was another thing I wanted to ask you. We, everybody was getting a 404 error on one of the pages?
I couldn't get that to replicate, so I'll have to ask who did that. Who got, what page they wanted to make that generate? Cause they went right to it for me. And I was doing all my friends, so.
Well, we were, we were doing it on our phones too. Cause somebody asked me a question and we could not get to that page. We just kept getting that.
Unless there's something in, did you do a Google search or did you go right to your?
No, I went to, I went right to the page.
I, I couldn't get it to replicate, so.
I don't remember what it was about. So we do, we do have a new wastewater treatment plant operator, correct? So we do, we do have a new wastewater treatment plant operator, correct?
Correct.
When, when is John retiring?
Uh, the first of the year.
Okay, and this guy's willing to wait till the first?
No, no, this is, this is backfilling. Um, so there'd be a natural progression of current employees into new holders.
'Cause we had, we had somebody else that did retire, right? What was his name?
Garth is retiring at the end of this month.
Oh, okay, all right. There's some good people we're gonna lose, a lot of experience.
We have some good people that are gonna be taking their place.
Oh, I know, but you know, when you're tinkering with it every day, you know, a little...
I know, I'm holding my breath, too.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, um, for, for moving on, no, just, you know, well, I can't really apologize, but I can apologize for the, the video not working last month. Um, I've lost a lot of sleep over that. Uh, I don't think it's gonna happen again. I went back to an old, um, drive that's always worked for us. Um, I was trying to up it to a five twelve so that we could get several meetings on one, um, what do you call those?
SD card?
Yeah, a little, uh, mini SD card. So, I, I am sorry that that occurred, but...
There's no reason why, but you can't count on technology, but I will say this, I would, I've always felt that we should have a system that real-time broadcasts. I mean, I know you could do it with that, but it'd be really hard to do it with that.
No, it'd be very easy, we discussed it before, but we have to have a web, or a Facebook page. If we have a Facebook page, we can do it right there, or if you wanted to do it Zoom, that would give the same thing on a Zoom.
That's actually something trying to log in and deal with all that, like, I think this is a good...
Well, everybody else would, everybody else has a Zoom, and I'm the only one on it.
You would know like that if something happened, 'cause it would go blank on your screen, so you would, you would have, like, right now, you don't know if that, if that's running or not.
Yeah.
So...
Can you record them and then put them out on to YouTube, or?
You can do, you can actually livestream YouTube, you can record via Zoom livestream, and as well as have it available for previous viewing, you can do that in Teams.
What, what if we just ran it through the TV, so that we would know if something happened, something glitched? Kind of, we just do that, or even run it through a laptop?
You'd have to turn the audio off to get feedback, but yes, you could.
Yeah, that might be a...
Why don't we attempt to look at that for next month, so that we, you can just set a laptop on the floor, mute it, and then you'd at least know that it's still running?
We, the camera will, as an output, that'll go directly to, uh, the TV, in the HDMI port.
You wanna play with that, see if you, whether you know?
Andrew, let me know when you're available, and I'll come down one day, we'll take a look at it. You've got HDMI's, is that what you have up there now, in there now?
Yep, yep.
It takes a different connection. We'll look at it.
Too many.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Sheldon Reginald, please?
Yes, so, uh, the fire in Storystown was reported on earlier this evening. I talked to all the departments involved, did an outstanding job, and, uh, used over a million gallons of water. So, congratulations to all that hard dedication, pre-planning definitely paid off. It's well, well aware of, a couple Mondays ago, uh, New Freedom had five cars stolen between twelve-thirty AM, two AM, right in that area. They had got a car in Anarundel County stolen, left it here, took five from New Freedom, used a credit card. Uh, two of those cars were recovered. I'm sure there's more information, but this was present information at the time of the police commission meeting. Um, one of those cars was crashed in Baltimore City. Uh, they were wearing gloves and masks when they were here, but hopefully through the credit card and the car that was crashed, they can recover, um, more information. And, uh, one car was stolen, I believe, from Third Street and left on Albright. So hopefully that, um, is gonna be all resolved. Uh, CVS, there was a woman coming from New Jersey, she'd make rounds at the CVS's, uh, she went into our ride-a, they kept following her around, they knew who she was. She left there, went across the street to CVS and stole two thousand dollars' worth of merchandise. Um, so they know who she is, so they're seeking a warrant for the arrest. Bill Hornberger was part-time SRPD for twenty years, uh, just doing two days a week. He has retired, and, um, chief is gonna put some feelers out to look for a, um, new part-time to replace him. Uh, spoke of having civil service again, I know we talked about it in the past, um, so we're going to be moving forward with that and looking into that. And, um, Dennis, you had a question regarding New Freedom's numbers and Shrewsbury's, um, Shrewsbury's, uh, had more incidences, but we had more time, I kind of explained that. Uh, chief responded to the question. He says, "The report in question was for the timeframe, February twenty-five, twenty-four through March twenty-three, twenty-four. The number of incidences was for all incidences reported during that specific time period. The time section for that period covers those incidences plus time spent during those dates on incidences that may have been reported months or years prior. There is no direct correlation between those two charts." You'll notice that this month, the exact same situation is reversed.
Well, that, there's not much difference, I mean, there's a difference of six in this month.
Um, time was spent this last month investigating a crime from two years ago, came through the courts, so detective had to spend time. Um, so incidences and time...
I have to refresh the calendar, too, before they can testify.
Are not related. Dennis, your point?
Uh, engineer monthly progress report for April twenty-four.
New Haven, uh, is moving forward with a planning commission?
Planning commission meeting is scheduled for next Monday, May twenty. That's to review the preliminary plan.
And are there any plans, as of yet, for the Shrewsbury Township's side of Kirchner?
No.
Sorry, are there any other ideas about planning coming up? Are they pretty much stuck with preliminary sketches?
Yeah, there's, they've made modifications based on working with Shrewsbury Township engineers, working with New Freedom engineers, working through York County Planning Commission comments, um, so they've been adjusting through all those different requirements and updating the plan. So, again, there's, there's a process that has to occur here, I believe, New Freedom, I believe, but we're going, New Freedom's going to be reviewing it during their May meeting, uh, it's going to go to Shrewsbury Planning Commission, most likely in June, so it'll have to go through those processes, kind of run in parallel, before, um, the government bodies see the time for approval.
And the solar farm, I thought that would be going a lot sooner.
Uh, we thought the same in the office. They did pick up and pay for the permit to construct those solar arrays, but they have not broken ground as of yet.
Was awesome. You heard any information coming from the doctor?
Uh, when they picked the permit up, which is, um, I'm gonna say that was probably towards the end of twenty-three or very early in twenty-four.
I was contacted today, and up against where Concord is, large trees were being cut down. Do you know who that was there today, David?
They've been, they've been...
Yeah, they've been doing work up there as...
Is that for the solar, or is that for Hamilton's, or?
New Haven.
New Haven?
For New Haven, yeah. Yeah, they've been up there surveying and clearing some area. Alone, there's, with the solar array, I did see that the same company that is doing the project in New Freedom had a proposed project in Dover Township that they just haven't plugged on. The difference there is, they did not already go through land development, they did not pull a permit, and they were not in any, uh, direct vicinity of the transmission line. So there were a lot of factors against them with that project, but it was still a little alarming, uh, seeing that news that we pulled the plug on that project. That was a smaller one, that's not the large six-hundred acre one that's proposed. Pulled the plug, that's a nice one.
Anything else on the warehouse? Aaron? New Freedom Borough Water Report?
Now, you, uh, uh, water report with a data log, did you find any leaks yet?
No.
No?
No. We did find a leak on a hydrant down on National Court, down at the bottom. We discovered, uh, I mean, it was just like a hundred, a little bit of under pressure leak on the hiders, we had to shut the hydrant valve.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're gonna try to open it up and see, we, I don't know if Simmons got in with the strange thing is, it's making a bump like that, and we're doing some flushing, and, uh, one of the guys discovered it was dripping, and, uh, so we're gonna try to refu, or try to open it up and put the caps on, try to flush it out with the Simmons, and if it doesn't do it, then we're gonna shut it down and take it up and find out what's going on.
Yeah.
But it wasn't anything major, it was just dripping, so there was, it was, uh, pressure was, was on the hydrant, which it shouldn't be, it should be a dry barrel hydrant. You know, one frees up the water box, and we're gonna discover the connect option.
Wastewater Treatment Plant?
I'm just wondering, I don't remember the name of the test, but the one that wasn't done for a year, first of the June or something? Was, was it wastewater cleaning newsletter, the second page in?
Oh, that was, that was water.
Oh, that was water.
That was the gross out...
How's that missed?
Well, it got me a little confused, too, because it's a hint we do every nine years. We've only done it three times since I've been here, which is every nine years to do it. We've always passed it, and when we sent the bottles, they used to send this big gallon jug, they used to take all the samples out of the junk. So they sent these separate jugs this time. It didn't have written on which ones they were gonna take out, so I assumed they were all being done. We're here, we're missing a sample bottle, so it didn't get pulled. But we didn't discover until D and P discovered it, and we didn't do the sample, but we redid it in January, and, of course, we're good, which we've always been good with it. But, uh, so it's gross out filler, radium, and, and here, this is what we do. Just radio back stuff that they finally ordered years ago. We don't have an issue with it here, we never did, so. But we had to do the sample, but we had to send the, uh, notice out to everybody that we missed a sample, that's a rule that D and P has, doesn't matter what sample it is, you gotta send it out saying you missed it. You missed it, we passed it, we're fine, uh, hope that won't happen again. But they just changed the bottles around on us this year, and, you know, nine years ago, it's just, you know, the bottles, and it's just gotten this.
While we're on wastewater, you said there's one requirement at the end of the month, and one, the next one was?
Beginning of the year.
Okay, so, I don't, I don't wanna speak for council, but should we come up with like a, say, a letter from council thanking them for their service? I mean, that's a pretty significant amount of service, correct?
Yeah.
Twenty...
Seventeen.
Seventeen? So, I think, do you mind directing a, a letter in recognition of the service as a, as a thank you? Can you, I don't know if you want a motion?
No.
Okay.
It's a good idea, thanks.
You, you had something that you had used for me in the past, uh, that we, we were, like, a commendation. I think it was for the Lions.
It was, yeah.
Thank you.
And also on wastewater? Code enforcement report.
I have to see the grass across from the cemetery on here. About two feet tall.
You missed the permit report.
I don't know. Have they been sent a letter?
Yeah, it's ready up for zone. The code enforcement. It's on to whatever.
That's the building one. I don't know which one, it's the next time they don't...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for a year, yeah.
Our, our, it's, it's spring, things are sprouting, growing. I know that you just tell, we have an ordinance that, what, the trees limbs, all that have to be seven feet above a sidewalk and nine feet above the, the road.
Yeah, I have to look at that.
We're kinda getting with some of these new, this new foliage, I saw a couple that were definitely not even close to nine feet.
And what we've done in the past is, initially, it's a courtesy letter, 'cause some people aren't aware of that regulation.
Yeah, and I know the guys are now doing the street sweeping, so they may come up with, you know?
Right, yeah.
That'd be a great time for them to see what's going on.
On seven and eight? What is going on there?
There, there were, there were some junk, yeah, in the driveway, some debris in the driveway that we received to complain about, and then there was a vehicle that was being worked on in the driveway, up on Jax, which is a violation.
Well, I know that it's been dealt with there on Washington for thirty-plus years. In that situation, isn't that a state violation, having those Maryland-tagged vehicles and showing it to them?
To, to Maryland?
When you say turned over to them, that's the term?
Well, this council's taken it up many times, and it fizzles away, and the people that live on Washington, um, deal with this day in and day out with no reprieve from the situation. It never improves. Their quality of life is absolutely impacted in front on the road, as well as the people that live behind him. And I don't know why, it's clear as day, he's a breath, he's a Pennsylvania resident, keeps all these cars tagged, Maryland, so he does not have to have them inspected. Hopefully, that's what it is, we all know it.
Well, we had the police go up and they make sure that they're registered and licensed, that there's not a lot that we can do.
Isn't this a state violation law issue? You only have X amount of days to register your vehicle once you move to the state.
Well, neighbors lived where they are for, for a year now, and they haven't changed their California tags.
Well, you know what, when they get twelve cars in front of their house, maybe somebody will take note of it. I'm dealing with one that's been a problem for over thirty years, and would like to see some relief for the residents up there.
Yeah, I mean, the, the last time we went through this, it was because there's an address in Maryland that is maintained as a mailing address for the, the vehicle registrations.
Is that in his house or something?
No, it's a cousin. I have a picture of the house.
But the vehicles are never there.
Oh, I, I agree. But.
Me too. It's frustrating.
Having legal ease in the room, is there any violation?
So unfortunately, because there's dual residency, I believe is what Andy was saying, that's, that's what becomes a problem for us. Is because they maintain a address in Maryland and in Pennsylvania, by law they're not required. Now, like I just moved up here in August. I had seventy days because I changed my residency to Pennsylvania. But because there's dual residency, that becomes a very gray area for us. And while we continue to deal with this over and over, they have found what I would call a loophole that allows them to continue to maintain what they have there. I would agree with it.
I wonder if the borough shows by a trail camera, whatever, that he resides here.
You have to prove what?
He doesn't.
One day over a, a year.
The dual residency, yes, as long as you maintain a address, it's no different than if you had one here and one at a house in Florida. If you maintain that dual residency, it doesn't matter whether you spend five minutes or four hundred and sixty-four days because you have, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we have gone to court over this before. Previous commissions have gone to court over this, and we've been ruled against.
Our solicitor said that it had to be, what, you, you don't have dual residency, and I have a friend that's just going through this now. You have to have a primary residence. He is changing his to Florida, but his daughter has a house up here that he's gonna be staying in almost all summer. Well, you can't say, well, your car is now registered in Florida, but you're living in a house here. That's not legal. It's where his residency is stated.
But I can tell you that Chief Biden has fought this battle multiple times, and unfortunately, we have not been able to make any progress on it.
Yeah.
Although I agree wholeheartedly with you, ma'am, it's unfortunately, some people have learned how to use that in their benefit.
People do it all the time here too, they have, have a residence in Delaware. Their school teacher here, but they say my residence is, is Delaware. That way they don't have to pay any tax.
This encompasses more than somebody says.
This is what he's doing now.
Well, I know that, but this is an absolute quality of life issue for the people, their home values. It's, it's above just saying, oh, I'm living in two places.
I know people that a real estate agent told them, if that wasn't like that, we could get you $60,000 more for their, for your house. And I, I think we're all perplexed. I don't, I don't know what, I wish our solicitor wouldn't have left.
There's, we've gone through this before.
Well, I, I know.
It literally, you know, you know how I feel about it.
Yep.
But what are you gonna do?
Unless you can prove that he's living here one day more than half a year.
You know, you know, he is, I mean, that's just a fact.
But the proof is in the pudding, you gotta be able to prove it.
Yeah, you know, if, you know, if he claims that the cars are registered in Maryland, and he has an address in Maryland.
I know. Somebody wants to check every day and see if he's there. We had brought that out before.
Is there anything else on the code enforcement report?
You gonna get the letter out tomorrow, class in the cemetery?
Absolutely. Okay.
I would like to take just a second for recreation. So there is no order, new, new Freedom Rec as we learned at the last meeting. I do wanna say I met Gina Porter, wanna make sure I get the last name right, cause it's very similar to some other last names in the borough. Very nice, she has a lot of great ideas. I think that's, overall, it's a really good move. Had a very long conversation about some stuff that goes on in the borough, has gone on. Things that the previous rec commission has done, wanna make sure that that continues. Talked about the parade, that was one that she had not known about, but I think really jumped on top of. Just sent out the letters the other day, I got mine, I think yesterday, for registration for the parade.
Yes.
So that's all going out, everything is, is still gonna be going on. Like I said, has, has a lot of ideas, about some programs in the park for the summer.
Is there a date for the parade?
It was the seventh?
It's always the last Saturday in the corner.
Yep, Saturday would be, was it July sixth?
Yes, yes, that's Saturday.
What was the time?
I had the time on there, I don't, I don't remember.
Will they get together?
Yeah, they had the registration, they had the kickoff, there, there was a couple different times on there. But it'll all be on the, the website and advertised as such. And there was some additional discussion about ownership of the Facebook page, about trying to get that. There is some work behind the scenes, so that, that can then be brought up to date and kept current. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to go the route of creating a new one, cause there's almost two thousand numbers, likes, followers, followers, thank you, that's on there, so that's a pretty substantial amount. I'd be ashamed to lose that and have to start over. Overall, I, I just wanna say very, very impressed with conversations and emails that I've had.
Do we have any idea when the new? I don't, I thought we originally said it was gonna be a rec over, a rec commission, whatever it is. Do we have any idea when they're gonna be?
Gina's working on surveying the members to try to come up with a date throughout the month that works for everybody. So I think that information was sent out, I'm not sure, but I knew she was gonna work on that to try to. Is we're gonna stick with that same, same day, or does that work for the representatives from Shrewsbury Township?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that was all, all I had, I just wanted to say that. I had a lot of good conversations with her, a lot of good stuff going on.
Are there any questions on the permit report or the subdivision of the office report? They were out of order, I'm sorry.
Are we still getting improvement costs from Franklin Square, the new building, or is that? Well, improvement costs down here, we had one for $85,000 on a building. Another $50,000 on a commercial building. None of those are for Franklin Square?
Yeah, that was for the fit out of the, the commercial space there.
Okay.
Do they have someone doing it there yet?
I was gonna say, it still looks like construction.
Yeah, there's, one of them is a jujitsu studio. Dojo.
Don't, don't look at me. That's something I thought I'd say.
This is going EMS, you have anything on EMS or fire?
Oh, yeah, I have one important thing on EMS. Chase truck is purchased, is right now being readied and equipped, and they anticipate that it will be on the move in the next month, maybe two.
Now be sufficient out of Shrewsbury Borough, right?
Yes. That was the arena.
They ruined it?
Yeah, they have one, they, I think they used to have their own, so one time, didn't they?
I believe so.
I believe so, so they have a bay for it.
That's a long building, too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it goes way back, cause I think they took that back part, put it to the blocks. That's, that's about it. I mean, the last meeting I went to, everything was well, and as the chief reported. Financially, they're okay for now.
Any word on the ladder truck?
No, they did not. As a matter of fact, I don't, I think they're still trying to pick out a, a company. It's between two companies, and they're getting estimates from two companies on it. The one we have now is still working fine, you know, they're keeping repairs up on it, which could get a little costly, but the warranty's over. But the new, the new chase truck will be, I think, an Explorer. Larger Explorer, and that'll carry everything that the ambulance has, except for a litter. It's even got a thumper. Put it on somebody's chest, and if you can't keep doing CPR, it does it for you, which is good. And they had a lot of this that they used from Glenrocks. Glenrocks, what did they use? Glenrocks at Unit, they had for three months just to see it out, work as a chase truck. Good to hear, always have somebody in town.
Yeah, really. Rental housing and occupancy ordinance?
We did get together on that, we have, are going to recommend a few changes. I had the PDF, which I couldn't really work with, and then my computer went out, and I had to send it back to the company. I got it, got it in doc form from Andrew, and I will be re submitting that, what we recommended, the committee, at next month's.
You said recommend changes, but what did you use as the baseline?
Uh, some of it, we, I didn't, should've brought my notes along, but I don't have them. One of the things was recommending that we do a, everything, of cour-, everything needs to be registered, owners, occupants need to be, we need to enforce the fact that they need, require Knox boxes according to our ordinance, because I can't think of anybody except for the apartments at Franklin Square that's really got them. It was a three-year inspection period with an alternating, you know, split it up in one this year, one next year, one the third year. And whenever someone moves out, we will go and inspect that, either borough zoning or a, someone from the fire department, because it's all related to fire.
I just meant if you had, if you were using some piece of literature as a, or somebody else's ordinance as a base.
No, we had one that was written up for New Freedom Borough. So we kind of, we sat down and tore that apart.
So you'll have that for us to review next month?
Next month.
Okay, great. Correspondence?
Oh, this is May, can I mention one more thing?
Sure.
Danny and I are going to the PSAB convention in June. So as not to cost the borough any more money, we're both sleeping in, I got a double queen room, so we're just gonna stay together, and this, I'm really glad he's going.
Sorry, Danny?
Yeah, you better not, or let me, you know, so I can bring my earplugs. One of the things that, you'd have to stay for a week. They have consecutive seminars, and you have to pick which one out of the three you wanna go to. Well, usually there's one you don't really care, but this way Denny can go to one, I can go to the other, and then we can let each other know. I did that with the mayor of, of Stewartstown, the one year they allowed her to go. And it really worked out well, we were able to corroborate, get, you know, like two back, it's one for me, one for her. And that's what I anticipate Denny and I to do, and we won't have another meeting until that, we attend that, it's June 2nd through the 4th.
Cool.
It's a good meeting, very interesting.
I need, do I have anything with this?
That's just a real estate report, just enough. If there's any.
It does, it's more information.
Yeah.
Any other comment?
This is the parade is till Saturday, July 6th at 4:30.
July 6th to 4:30?
Yeah, that's when it starts. I have, I have a question. Are all sidewalks in the borough supposed to be ADA compliant?
Well, the last ruling was that when you address a road as far as making street improvements, you need to address the handicap accessibility, especially at the crosswalks within that project.
I know, we, we did that out.
Yeah, you're not going to get full compliance with ADA standard because there's split requirements, and there's just areas where you're not going to be able to meet. In theory, yeah, you'd like them all to be handicap accessible, in reality, it's not feasible. It's not going to be feasible to even make that work along Main Street where we have an extension of the crosswalk that was put in the area of rail rail, and that's due to grade and other utilities in the area. We have to file a technically a feasibility document with PNDOT to say that we're doing everything we can to make this ADA accessible, but it's outside those guidelines. It's outside those regulations.
I didn't know, because like one side of the street, they have it south constitution, one side of the street has handicapped accessible, and the other side of the street doesn't. There's only one, one intersection that I think that does not have it.
So there's a ramp on one side and one on the other?
On, on the east side, they have it, on the west side, no, and I think it's just the one curb.
Yeah, I'm sure there's quite a few throughout the town that we can find that.
I'll talk to you about it later.
Right, there's not.
See if there's anything.
Other than implementing a project where we're going around and replacing those curb ramps throughout the borough, which, which can be done, you're going to eat up a lot of your street improvements.
Well, PNDOT made us do that during the last episode, right?
Which is, right.
And we had just done them, not too many years ago, but they changed their.
Absolutely.
Cost us a, a lot more.
It does.
Okay. All right, I've been asked a couple.
Anything else?
Hey, Andy?
Oh, sure. Ma'am?
Good evening, Mr. President and Council. Heard small town councils can get heated sometimes, and I wasn't disappointed.
I'm sorry, Andy, can we get your name?
Yeah, sorry, Ezekiel Solaris Adana. And I just moved here recently, I think two months ago now, to New Freedom. And a question was brought up tonight, you know, why do people come to New Freedom? Maybe tourism or to stay, and I just thought I'd give you my perspective as to why I came here specifically. But before that, just wanna point out some of the problems that you have might be good problems to have. You don't, don't have enough parking, good, more people are, are coming to live here. You don't, don't have enough parking, good, more people are, are coming to live here. But as far as why myself and my wife moved here, we were already looking to leave Baltimore after two years. And I, I was, I'd been a resident of York County, of York actually, uh, for five years and then decided to move to Baltimore for work. But, uh, it really wasn't for, for me and, and my family. Big city living is, it's much different. People don't, uh, don't talk, people don't treat each other kindly sometimes. And, you know, we were looking to move away and my parents live close by Schuze River and just, uh, my wife found Franklin Square, an apartment open and we came to look. Yeah, the place was nice, it was only a hundred dollars a million, we were paying for three times, three times a space, much nicer. And what really, uh, really set the deal, uh, you know, made us decide to come here was we went to Vortex, had a nice meal and we started talking to the people around here. And I like to say Americans are honest, quite honest, uh, especially small town folk. And all I got were, it's well, it's wonderful living here, I love living here, I've been living here for decades. And just from the experience of having lived in Baltimore, I'd, I'd say there's something special here in New Freedom at least from what I could tell at a glance in the short time that I have been here. There are people walking and they're on the trail at eight p.m. Doesn't happen in Baltimore. I was just walking by and a person, it, it, just a guy working said, how you doing, man? I don't, I never got that over there. So I think there is something special here and looking forward to living here long term. And, uh, I think it's, I think it's worth preserving what you have. Just, uh, thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, welcome.
All right.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
It's good to end on a positive note. And now I will entertain the motion.
Who moves?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And I vote as a, thank you.
Ezekiel. If I got some contact information from this.
Sure.
Sir.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, I think Brian. There's no Mr. Ross. I don't, I don't let anybody.